That was the race to take the last bridge over the Rhine.
I have seven o'clock.
Okay, all right, I want to remind everyone that this meeting will be recorded and posted to the township video website. Now you can submit public comment by email to G Lippincott at West Rock Hill Township.org. We will take public comment until the end of the meeting. And we'll read public comment prior to the vote at the end of the meeting, depending on what is appropriate, okay? I'd like to call this meeting to order. For March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and I would like to ask everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to open the meeting by asking anyone for public comment on the agenda items, and if you have any public comment, please state your name and your address. Hearing none, seeing none? I will move on to announcements. Greg, do we need an executive session tonight?
I don't know.
Personnel, Mary?
Unless there's a legal issue you guys want to talk about, I don't have anything off the top of my head.
Either of you two fellow supervisors have anything for executive session for tonight?
No, sir.
I have nothing.
Okay, so seeing nothing, we will not have an executive session after tonight's meeting. I will move on to the consent agenda. Have either of my two fellow supervisors had a chance to look at the consent agenda? Do you have any additions, corrections, or motion to to approve the consent agenda?
I've had time to review it, no changes.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
Okay, motion's been made. Seconded by Hal. All those signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, confirmed appointments. I don't see any listed here. So moving on to committee reports, the first one on there is Planning Commission Report, Mr. Durstein.
He's muted.
You muted yourself, Chris.
Look at that, there I am. Is Greg supposed to give his treasurer's report before I give him?
Oh, I'm sorry, you, he is, I missed that. Greg, could I, could I back you up one step, please?
Absolutely. The treasurer's report for February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. The general fund, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Highway aid, fifty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Open space, one million, one hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-one cents. The park fund, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. The equipment fund, one thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. Highway capital, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Streetlight, thirty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. The general fund reserve, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. The American Rescue Plan Fund, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty-one cent. Open Space Manderfield, forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. The Sewage Maintenance Fund, one hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. Stormwater Fund, eight thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. And the escrow funds, two million, three hundred seventy-two dollars. Two million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions regarding the bill payments?
On the transfer out from Manderfield.
Yes, the transfer out from Manderfield is for the tree cutting. We had a lot of tree cutting out there, maintenance of Manderfield.
All right, thank you, Greg. Anything else, Hal?
Nope.
Okay, all right. We already made approval for the, for approval of the, or the consent agenda, so I will move on then to committee reports. Mr. Durstein, thank you again for the reminder on that.
Yeah, from, all right, so Planning Commission met last week, we had two applicants. The first was Tim Snyder, Butter Creek Builders. He has that fifty-seven acre lot out on Camp Rock Hill Road that we all know about. He's had an approved plan to subdivide that lot for quite some time. Using a P-lute, serving, I think it was thirteen lots. He then came back in with a cul-de-sac plan with around the same number of lots, but the cul-de-sac was almost twice what Sado allowed, so. The Planning Commission wasn't going to recommend moving forward with that, so he, he just came back with another plan, a sketch plan. Reducing it to five lots, all having access from Camp Rock Hill Road. And it's, you know, it's pretty simple, playing their large lots. A couple of, you know, just little issues that I think they're going to be able to clean up easy enough. So, you know, Planning Commission was, you know, willing to suggest they, they move forward and get it cleaned up and come on, come on back in. So that was it for Tim Snyder and Butter Creek Builders. You have any questions on that?
I have none.
I was at the meeting, I have none, Mr. Durstein.
Similarly, I listened in on the meeting, no questions.
Okay, so moving on, the second app was, except an applicant was Sal Lapio Homes, Green Top Road subdivision. They're proposing to subdivide an eighteen and a quarter acre lot in the seven single-family building lots under U.S.B. one. The property is at the northwest corner of Green Top and Catch Basin Roads. They were in once before and he came back, you know, plugging in some of the suggestions that we had given them and. So they, they proposed to ride in the, road widening is a definite there, you know, how narrow that road, both those roads are. So they agreed to the required fourteen-foot half width. They weren't going to include shoulder with that PC common that they would like to see a four-foot shoulder. It seemed like they were agreeable to do that as well. And they are also looking to replace, improve the culverts on the, on the right away, on those, on their frontages. They also, the property of Butts, the Huntsburger property, which has a trail easement through it. And Planning Commission recommended, you know, per Steve's recommendation, that they have a, some type of a connection to that easement and have trail through their property. Walking trail. They really did not want to have walking trail through their property. Understandably, but what they were amenable to was providing a, an easement along the property boundary that, that borders with the Huntsburger property. So they, it sounds like they would be willing to do that, put in a trail easement along the edge of the property and then also provide a paved walking path on the frontage of their property. So possibly something down the road could happen trail-wise if they, if they follow through with that. They're looking for a handful of waivers, some of which were simple, some needed discussion. So, you know, the, the plan was tabled until they, they clean up a little bit and come back with revised plans. Okay, so that was it for Green Top for now, if you have any questions on that.
I don't have any at this time.
I have none.
Mr. Collingwood?
I have none.
Okay, last item, we did have started discussion again on cul-de-sac length and, and standards and whatnot. We did put a few little things together that we wanted Steve to review. I don't know if he's gotten that yet, but we are moving forward and trying to make some progress there. And the comp plan initiatives, Mr. Sweraduck had contacted, he contacted Park and Rec with what he suggested would be their initiatives, and he was going to contact Conservation Committee. So that is what I have on that. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, otherwise that's my report.
Okay, I have no questions.
No questions from David Collingwood.
Thank you.
No, no questions.
And entertain a mo- motion for approval of the, the Planning Commission Report by Mr. Durstein?
So moved, David Collingwood.
Second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Wonderful. All right, moving on to the next committee report would be the Park and Rec, Mr. Dave Rice.
All right, how's the bread doing tonight? It's a beautiful night for the park, to be out in the park. And we're here, enjoying our evening, that's what I was going to say anyway. All right, so we had a good meeting last Thursday evening. Brendan Fielin, the president of the Historical Society, was kind enough to stop by and talk to us in regards to the timeline of the Heritage House. It looks like they're going to be finishing up by May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and we had agreed upon that they would have their artifacts migrated from the cabinets over in the township building over to the Heritage House. So we had come to an agreement that May thirtieth was the drop dead date there for that. It was great conversation, we learned a little bit about some of the things. They are having a they're having scheduled, they're having a scheduled event, June fifth, from twelve to five at James Memorial, and they're looking for volunteers. So that was something else I had also inquired about, so I figured I'd give a little shout out there. We have a request that we would like to have Sherry Hoffman as our alternate for the Park and Rec. We have another request that we would like to have and purchase and add a new bench for Cheryl Kogasi in memory of Mike. Ordered through Palini's and Buxmont Awards for the plaque. That would all go through Greg and we'd get you to build from there if we get the approval for that. We did speak in regards and had a conversation about the comprehensive plan inquiry from Mr. Sweraduck. We had some good conversations, we'll probably continue to have conversations. We have Fish and Derby coming up, it's not long now, it's just about a month and actually five weeks away. April twenty-third, nine to twelve, come on out. There's going to be some really cool fish, right Jay? Lots of cool fish, expensive. The Farmers Craft Market, we're going to have Saturday, May twenty-first, eight to twelve. There are going to be ten by ten spaces, ten dollars a spot. So hopefully they were getting inquiries and lots of people that would like to show up to the Farmers Craft Market. We have movie night scheduled for Saturday, August thirteenth. No, no movies get scheduled yet. September Fest is scheduled for Sunday, September twenty-fifth. And a shout out to Greg for ordering and getting in the new microphone, so it's greatly appreciated. And I believe that is all I have.
Okay. You do, you did, I saw an email, I was wondering if the other two supervisors got that email of the location of the bench, the proposed location?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so I know there was concern, we all wanted to make sure that we knew where it was going to be before we would give any kind of approval on that.
Correct, sorry about that, I should have said that.
When, when was that email sent? Because I have not seen it.
I saw it. Yeah, I just sent it today.
All right.
It's a picture of it.
I have yet, I have yet to see it, so.
Could, could you, Dave, could you, could you explain to Mr. Collingwood the location of the, where the bench proposed location is?
It would be on the closest side to the, so there's two allocated already by, by the park bench plan that we have in existence already, so basically what it would be is there's two blue triangles that are listed in our bench plan, it is the one closest to the walking path, not the one closest to, I guess, the tree line there on the property line.
Does that help?
Nope, it's kind of dark, or real lighthearted.
All right.
Sherry, if you can stop presenting a second.
I'm just pulling up on your email.
Oh, here we go.
There it is. Even have a little arrow. Does that look good, David?
Are you speaking with me?
Yes.
Yeah, the only issue I have is, and I, I thought about this earlier, getting an email at five fifty-eight prior to a meeting is, is not the way we really want to do things. If we want quality in this process.
Okay.
I think that a couple of things have to happen tonight, we are going to approve the Park and Rec minutes as they are presented. And we are approving the minutes only as they are presented, nothing specific which must be approved by a separate vote, which in this case, we also want to approve separately the purchase of the bench, which I'm in favor of, and we also want to separately approve the placement of the bench, which I'm, which I'm in favor of. I just want it to be systematic, so we work through this process in a controlled way, so. Other than the five fifty-eight second email, we're good.
So can I ask a question then? So we already have a park bench plan, that's why we created it, we have the blue items that are listed there, which are future items that was approved, the park bench plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors last year, so everything was approved, the locations, it's just a matter of what specific location, so that's the difference that we're talking about now as to the approval?
I think there might be some, some issues there because it may have been approved as part of approving a Park and Rec report, it wasn't a separate line item that was approved. The way we're doing it tonight is absolutely the best way to do it, and I have no issues with it, so. We're going to, we're going to approve the purchase of the bench, and then we're going to approve the placement of the bench with the red arrow.
Do you, would you prefer we table that placement of that, the placement of the bench, David, until you had a chance to go out to the park and look at that location there?
No, I'm fine with this. I, I, thank you, Mr. Kaiser, I'm absolutely, I'm absolutely fine with this. I had thought that we would probably have to wait until next, till the April meeting, but I'm, I'm looking at it right now, I see the red arrow, I see the blue triangle. As long as everyone else is on board with it, I'm okay with it.
Well, I, I apologize for that, because we did talk about this before last year when that other bench was placed without, without approval of the location, and we need to make sure we do do this, you know, ahead of time. If we decide on a Thursday of the meeting, we should make sure that we do identify that right away, so that it's in the packets for the supervisors.
Thank you.
Yep, and, okay. The other issues is looking at trying to get on schedule to get trees. So perhaps we can go through and try to figure out, okay, here's where we're going to put park benches, where we're going to put trees, and just have that, okay, as we get things, we can fill in the blanks without, without a separate approval, because you're approving the plan, and then you just start filling in the plan.
Yeah, we do have the tree plan too.
All right, so I guess what we'll do is, Dave, is there anything else on your, on your report?
That's all, thank you.
He did mention the, the recommendation of an alternate member.
That's correct. Sherry, Sherry, what was Sherry's last name again?
Hoffman.
Hoffman, Sherry Hoffman, yes. She was at our meeting and spoke with the, with the committee, and the committee overwhelming, I think it was unanimous, wasn't it, Dave?
Yes, it was.
So I would be happy to make a motion that we accept Sherry Hoffman as the alternate, alternate on the Park and Rec Committee.
And I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. So you can, Greg, you can inform Sherry Hoffman that she is officially the, a new member of the Park and Rec Committee as an alternate. The next thing I would like to ask for is, is a vote on the, the purchase of a park bench for Cheryl Kogasi in memory of her son, Michael.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have motion made, do I hear a second? Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those signify by saying aye, aye? And then I would also like to entertain a motion for the placement, which has been identified by the red arrow for the location of the bench for Cheryl Kogasi's son, David, or Michael, I'm sorry.
Yep, I'll move.
Okay, motion made?
Second, David Collingwood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collingwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, ayes have it. Are there any other issues there, Mr. Rice?
Nope, that's all, thank you.
Okay, very good. I will, I will inform, I got an email today with the total so far of the fishing derby. And they're not all in yet, but as of right now, we have twenty-nine hundred and fifty dollars contributed towards the fish, so we're going to be in great shape, even though the fish went up sixteen percent. I would like to thank, and I know a lot of people are not listening that, that contribute, but there are some that are listening. And I would like to thank everyone that has contributed to this great effort that we put forth every year. Thank you all. We've got a great township here of businesses and friends. All right. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Park and Rec Report as presented.
So moved?
All right.
Second, David Collingwood, second, David Collingwood.
Seconded by Mr. Collingwood, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Very good, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Okay, moving forward to commission reports, the first on there is the police report, Chief Paul Dickinson, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I have the February activity report for the Penand Regional Police Department. We responded to seven hundred and twenty-seven calls for service. Of those calls for service, three hundred and four of them were in East Rock Hill Township. Four hundred and twenty-three of them were in West Rock Hill Township. We handled a total of twenty-four traffic crashes, twelve in East Rock Hill and twelve in West Rock Hill, an even number there. Thirteen of them were reportable and the remaining eleven were non-reportable crashes. As far as crimes, crimes for the month of February, we had nine Part One crimes and twenty-four Part Two crimes for a total of thirty-three crimes. The reported crimes for the month, theft of auto parts in East Rock Hill, theft from a building in East Rock Hill, theft from auto, two of those. Two fraud complaints in East Rock Hill, narcotics, three narcotics, narcotics complaints, three harassments. Disturbances, disorderly conduct, two of them, and then we had two trespass, trespass complaints in East Rock Hill Township. Excuse me, West Rock Hill Township, we had two assaults, one report of a theft of auto parts, two thefts. Two, three reports of criminal mischief, a narcotics complaint, two DUI complaints. Twelve disturbances slash disorderly conducts. A trespass complaint, and then our local ordinances for West Rock Hill were the dog law violation, nuisance ordinance violation. Criminal charges filed for January of two thousand twenty-two. One charge of reckless endangerment, one charge of trespassing, one charge of harassment. One charge of simple assault, we had three charges of drug possession and two charges of drug paraphernalia possession. And then three DUIs charges filed. As far as other activities, the department conducted in February, one hundred and sixty-eight traffic enforcement details. We issued thirty-seven traffic citations, twenty-seven traffic warnings, twenty-one school checks, ninety-three park checks, and we conducted sixteen foot patrols. So your yearly crime so far for two thousand twenty-two. We had four, oh, one thousand four hundred and eighty-six calls for service, forty-eight traffic accidents, fifty-seven yearly offenses, and a total of nineteen charges filed for two thousand twenty-two so far, and that would be your chief's report, gentlemen.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the chief regarding his report or any comments?
I have none.
Nope, no questions.
Okay, I have none either. I entertain a motion for approval of the chief's report as presented.
So moved, David Collingwood.
Seconded, Hal Trummer.
Seconded by Hal? All, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, chief, very good.
Thank you very much, have a good rest of your evening.
You too. All right, moving forward, the Joint Rec Authority Report. This is Jan Deeds, how are you?
Good, how are you? How is everybody? I'd like to first of all thank each and everyone that attended our meeting. It was great having both representation from West Rock Hill Township as well as Sellersville Borough at our meeting. As you will see, it's, as you saw, sometimes it's a crazy little thing, and sometimes it's very calm. We have a lot going on right now. I will tell you that our contribution letters have been mailed out as of yesterday. Thank you, Hal, for giving us a list, as well as the Sellersville Borough employee, Eileen, gave us for them. So that over two hundred copies went out. We are presently working on, we are going to be having a craft and flea market on April thirtieth with the rain date on May seventh, which would be held at the Holiday House. We are having a cleanup day, April ninth, at the pool. And with that, the trees have been taken down at the pool as of yesterday. Cleanup did begin. Wes Davenport is the person that removed the trees for us. He did a fantastic job. He took away a lot of the larger pieces of wood, but there is still wood there. So we will discuss that at our next meeting, how we're going to do that. I know the biggest question is, do we have lifeguards? We have made to, an offer for a manager and assistant manager as of today. We also have three lifeguards coming aboard. And as I was sitting here, I just got another email of another lifeguard wanting the information. We've handed out approximately fifteen application to the girls polo team, winter polo, they came in and obtained them. I haven't had any further discussion with Menlo and how they're making out. I am going to reach out to her and see where they stand at this point in time. And I also would like to thank you for your check, thank you very much. Other than that, we're just trudging along and doing what we do best, working to make sure we own the pool. Do we have any questions?
Yes, David Collingwood, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, David.
Thank you. Do you have a date that you will be open or not open, go or no go, based on whether you're going to have the manager, assistant manager, and lifeguards?
I should know that date better by the, by your April meeting.
Okay.
In our April first, and our first meeting in April. We have discussed a little bit about that, not this last meeting, we didn't, we did before. So we're just like pushing along here right now to see where we are and see where we can go at that point.
And the second question I have is, I saw from the minutes that you were working to develop a plan, a model, to become a self-sustaining. Can you, is it appropriate to ask you, do you, where that plan is right now, or is it still in its infancy and it hasn't progressed far enough to make a report?
It's still in its infancy, and I will promise I will have a report for you in April.
Thank you, that's my questions.
Okay.
I have, I have a couple, and that, that was actually one of them that I had, because at our last West Rock Hill meeting, we had asked for a long-range plan, you know, to stay in the pool, and, and I didn't hear that, I didn't, I didn't think it was appropriate for me to speak up at your, at your meeting. But I do, that that is very important, that we, we know that, because from my perspective, and I think you know, you've shared, we think that the pool should be self-sustaining.
Correct.
That be able to run on its own, and I will share, you know, there was some bickering about raising the prices of the season tickets, you know, which I think anyone in business knows, you have to, you have to look at what your costs are, and then you have to adjust your prices for what you charge. anyone in business knows, you have to, you have to look at what your costs are and then you have to adjust your prices for what you charge accordingly to that. And I know that there were motions made on spending money that really didn't have to do with the pool. But I will say, you had one heck of a offer from your husband to do that work for what he did that work for.
Yes, and that is, that, that will be taken care of within the next month.
I commend that very much, very deeply because that has been an issue. But I do, I do worry, I am concerned about the pool being able to open. And I, I hope that you are successful with your, with your lifeguards. I see, I see a, a challenge there for you to be able to get enough people, but.
I know, I know. And we're working hard at that challenge.
For now, that's all I have. Thank you, Jan.
Okay, thanks. Hal, anything?
Well, one quick note, the, the post office is actually acting pretty quickly because the donation request already came into my mailbox for Buxmont Real Estate.
Good.
What time is the cleanup on April 9th?
It will, it will be from nine to one, somewhere in there. We're going to picking up the rest of the debris that's left over from the trees if we don't have that done by then. You know, cleaning out the restrooms, things like that, taking, you know, told, you know, looking at everything to make sure everything's working. And going from there. So it would probably be about a four hour work committee. And I am going to be asking for volunteers from the community to come out and help us.
Jan?
And then one follow up that since our, you know, costs are going up, so the amount for the tickets is probably gonna be going up, but I believe that the wages are also gonna be going up. So hopefully that will help out with the issue of finding lifeguards.
Yes, I'm hoping so too. So, so we're, we're hanging in there that way. I am as worried as you are about finding lifeguards and making sure that we are going to be able to open and stay open. That, that's my, you know, that's my biggest worry. The fundraising part, I'm not so worried about. I have a whole list of things that we're doing and that will come late, a little later on that wants to be, get them into fruition. But I am worried too. And I, I can't say I'm not.
Well, hey, last year, Menlo had to close because they didn't have enough lifeguards at certain times. So we understand the time that's going on. I, I would, I do want to throw something out to you and I don't know whether it can be done or not. You know, we did sell the house off that time when we, when we
Yes.
Subdivided. I, and, and it's something to look at or to take back to your next meeting. The possibility because I was thinking on how, how, how to get money, how to raise money so that pool could stay in operation. Is there, is there a chance to look at subdividing, selling off some of the land? You know, we had 11 acres there. And there's quite a bit of land that's off the Holiday House Road there. I don't know.
That is, that is one of my ideas.
Okay.
Yes.
Take that back and pursue that if you, if you would, you know, just find out for feelers and see what, what could be done if anything.
Okay, that is, that is on my list. So we think alike, Jay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's all I have. Great job.
Okay, that's all I have to do today.
All right, I'll, I asked for a motion to approve the Joint Rec Authority Report as presented.
I'll move to approve the Joint Rec Reports.
Second, David Collingwood.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Jan.
And thank you.
Moving forward, the next on the agenda is the Tax Collector's Report. Suzanne Clark.
Suzanne cannot make it tonight, so I'll give the Tax Collector's Report.
Wonderful.
For the month of March, collected $39,158.67.
Okay. Any questions or, or comments regarding the Tax Collector's Report?
I have none. I'd make a motion to approve the report as presented by Mr. Lippincott.
Motion's been made. Seconded, all those signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the Engineers Report, Mr. Bowles.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the only thing we have on the report was the status of the various partners review period and they have confirmed that they, they submitted an indefinite extension for their review period. So that issue has been resolved. We anticipate within the next 30 days, I think that there'll be resubmitting the plan anyway. So that's gonna move forward. The only other thing I'd like to just update you on, we have rebid the culverts as was discussed at last month's meeting.
Right.
That bid opening date is the 29th of March. So before your next meeting, we'll have those results.
Very good.
That's all I have unless there's any questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Questions, okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Engineers Report.
So moved, Davey Collingwood.
Motion's been made.
Seconded, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, moving forward, next on the agenda is the Solicitors' Report. Mary Everly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. At the last month's meeting, you reviewed the application of THP for Oakwood Terrace on Lawn Avenue, the age restricted plan. Since then, we prepared approval resolution consistent with Steve Bowles' letter and your discussion last month. We've negotiated the terms of that resolution with the developer and it is on your, in your packets and I, we emailed an updated copy this morning for your consideration. So if, if you're inclined to adopt it, you would, could do so by making a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-03.
2022, right.
2022, okay. Anybody have any questions regarding that? If you're fine with the changes, okay. I would entertain a motion for approval, adoption of 2022-03.
So moved, Hal Shermer.
Motion's been made.
Second, David Collingwood.
Seconded by David Collingwood. I just want to have one, one quick question for you, Mary. The, the lot that was closest to the intersection area that was, that was short on footage, was that taken care of?
Well, the day after your meeting, you got a, a review letter from McMahon Associates saying that they didn't think it would be a problem. But that particular waiver is still deferred to final plan approval because the board did not have an opportunity to consider that a public meeting. And staff did not feel comfortable including that as a granted waiver without yours seeing it and discussing it.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that then, we will move forward. We have a motion made in a second on preliminary approval. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Is that all?
That's all I have.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Solicitors' Report as presented.
I'll move to approve the Solicitors' Report.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving forward, the next on the agenda is the Township Manager Report, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report this month.
Oh, wow. Well, that's pretty cool. We must not have any complaints, huh?
I really don't think that that's ever happened before.
No, I don't remember it.
I do have one quick question. I'm just curious, how did we do on salt this year?
We did well. I'm guestimating that it was about 400 tons of salt. We're letting the salt kind of run out this year so that we don't have more to transport to the new salt shed. So we have a very low quantity salt shed now. We'll only have to move over, you know, maybe 100 tons over.
Okay. All right, well, since you have nothing else to report there, I, I, I'll ask for a there's nothing on the manager for it, so I'm not gonna have a, a motion to, to approve it. Moving forward, next on the agenda is old business. Anybody have any old business?
I do not.
I have none.
Okay, I don't have any either. So moving forward, new business?
Nothing from me.
I'm, nothing from David Collingwood.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing on the agenda at this time either. Moving on to public comment, if you do have public comment, please state your name and address. Greg, do you have any public comment through emails?
I have one public comment through emails.
Okay.
This is from Ida in Harry Law, Thousand Acres. Meeting at township buildings that all residents can come to. The showcase for artifacts need to be in the township office so residents can see it. Not across the township, open five days a week, eight hours a day, building. Across the street is only a couple of days a year. Mr. Kaiser needs to think about the residents of the township and not himself. I would never vote for him. Very poor leader.
All right, well, thank you for the public comment there. Any other public comments?
I have no other via email.
Anybody online? Okay, seeing none? I will close this meeting. And we will I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second, David Collingwood. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yes, motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all for coming and paying attention and giving your input. Good night, everybody.